Turn it online.
I get they saw me.
Well, I hit record show.
What is.
It'll be a little bit on front.
They are.
When I look at it, it looks like she was.
You can't keep up.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, yeah.
No, I'm.
All right.
Let's roll.
All right.
Okay.
Hi, everybody. Welcome. This is the Culver Plan Commission work session for Tuesday, March 12th. We are recording, so if anybody has any comments, just know that we're going to record. Anybody online has chats, we will ask for questions moving forward. But for right now, let's just go ahead and get into it with the roll call of members.
Hey, Joel Samuelson.
Present.
Terry McManway.
Present.
Dan Osborne.
Present.
Jerry, Jerry Stiller.
President.
John Houghton.
President.
I'm here. Chester Goof. Chester, are you online?
Okay.
He's tried. He was on the phone with me trying to get online.
Okay. John Miller.
President.
Bob Cooper. Is he online?
He is.
Okay.
Hi, present online.
Okay, thank you.
That's some rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the question I have is since this is a work session, can we approve the minutes of the last meeting or we got to wait till next week? Yeah.
Yeah.
Also, great. I thought that was a little bit early.
Yeah.
All right. So do we want to go ahead and open for the Dunes site? Yep. All right. Let's go ahead and open it for the Dunes site plan review. Anybody here to speak on behalf of them?
Not seeing me. They were here for the T R C meeting and tonight it's much more about you guys looking at plans and asking your questions without.
Hello.
Hello.
May I ask who that was?
Hello.
Steve.
Yep. Is that Chester? Is that you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm on the phone. Uh, but I've, I'm not. And I can't get into the meeting through teams.
That's okay. Well, we just started, so being on the phone is fine, sir.
Oh, my gosh, it's gonna cost a fortune, huh? Oh.
You get a discount.
Well, Chester, since you got the floor, do you have any questions you would like to ask for the site review?
Well, the, uh, you know, we're, we're increasing the, uh, we, we could be increasing the population of the town by about thirty to fifty percent. And, uh, what does this have to do with, uh, uh, the, the other, uh, things that we're gonna have to have done, like, uh, will there be enough, uh, uh, school teachers and, and, uh, police, fire, you know, et cetera? We need more school room. It's gonna really increase the size of our, our small town.
It'll be a plus.
Yeah.
Good.
Do you want us to ask estimates in general of, uh, how many people they foresee moving in versus how many projected they see for children and things like that is?
What we got is. Yep, Chester, this is Kevin Dante talking. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna speak up a little bit. What we're looking at with using the last census record, we're probably looking at about a four hundred to four hundred and fifty person increase, so we are probably at about forty percent. That's assuming all three hundred are built and all three hundred are occupied based upon the census average. That likelihood is probably not very high. Initially, I asked a review with Terry, uh, Wayne Bean, uh, and discussed about our, as well as EMS services, uh, our capability of handling this. This number would put us back closer to numbers that we experienced ten years ago in this town. And we were fewer staffed at that time than we are currently. Probably didn't have the equipment. We've got two members of the fire right here that could maybe speak towards that. But I think we're better equipped to handle it now than we were. Back to your point, we project that the traffic might be the one issue, Chester. But before we get people, before we get people in there, we could end up under engineering or over engineering. So we've got to get people in there, see what we're dealing with. And then we need to make the adjustments based on that by monitoring it as we grow.
And in, in the meantime, it's gonna cost us a fortune to do that. Our taxes are gonna go way up.
No, I don't think it will. I appreciate that thought. I don't, I don't, this is not going to cost on local taxes. Uh, those studies can be done by MACOG, which is free to us. We can also use some of the offsetting money that we recapture back on TIF, especially when it comes to infrastructure improvements. And that's what the intention is going to be. I'm not trying to satisfy your question, Chester, just addressing conversations that we, we've had.
Yeah, just a question that I have, you know.
Yep, it's a good question.
This is a work session, you know, we.
Yes, sir.
Wanna go over all the things that are in our mind that could affect us, uh, good or bad.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Karen had the same question about the schools, but she, she voiced that she was excited, the superintendent, that to get more kids in and, and have that opportunity to grow. Those are the responses I've gotten back from people based upon your questions.
And we, we covered, uh, a lot of the, the water situation at the last, uh, at our T R C meeting.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
I still get in, can't get into the, uh, uh, to the teams meeting.
You're fine. I wish to hear you fine.
Do you have any other questions, Chester, while you got the floor?
Not right now.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions they thought of?
We can tell TV, I mean, a lot of things have already been addressed.
Mm-hmm.
Would it be useful to go over some of the things?
Right. Yeah, I think we should go over the points that, that were brought up that were supposed to be addressed before this meeting. Yeah, eight points. Right. I think those are important because those are things that, did they get, and I guess my first question, did they all get addressed?
Yep. Um, we got, I'll go over the points. I'll let Scott comment on it because we've received some things in the email. I'd prefer him speaking towards engineering, prior to being an expert. We were last at the T R C. Uh, according to Indiana Code three twenty-seven, there were some manhole shifts that had to happen because they were over four hundred foot and linear foot. And the state regulations require them to be four hundred foot spacing. Um, I don't know if those were addressed. I know we got some new plans and we'll hit that in a minute. One of the questions that we had was that they ended up going from a ten inch to an eight inch, or they went to an eight inch, excuse me, to a ten inch tap based upon a, a suggestion, trying to find out the calculations based what Scott asked them. They also put on that we were gonna be responsible if we had to do any more work because of the wrong sizing. We were, we had to remove that comment because we're not gonna be liable. And we asked for the calculation numbers to find out right size pipe. The issue here is if we use a ten, we may be depleting or using too much water, which might cause pressure issues down the line for the town. If we use an eight inch, we may be undersizing. What we want is the right size based upon mathematics, not best guesses. And so we asked for those calculations. Um, the store connection, we asked for those to be removed from hydrant. Bob emailed today. Bob said that we do indeed want the store connections for the fire department. I've got two, not, not. And we, uh, talking to the Culver Equities, we think we can get those back in no problem. Right? Burke suggested that's not an issue, so that's, that's different. We were looking at that weirder size for the drainage detention pond, and we wanted calculations and measurements for that, a little better illustrations that Scott requested. Um, in order to provide, provide maybe a little more formal comments on that. Um, he was happy. Scott said he was happy with the emergency routing of the watershed or that was concerned, excuse me, that most of the water in terms of the storm was directed and flowed correctly. What we were more worried about was on that northeast area, putting a high water relief for our water plant. We were worried about the wellhead. Chester brought that up during last meeting and it was right. And we were also concerned about water pressure and feeding the hydrants. We wanted calculations on that. Um, I'll let you speak on those points, Scott, if you want to, or address anything you guys have.
Um, Scott Seifel with Midwestern Engineers.
You said, is that just S I P, Ali?
That is correct. Thanks. Um, so based on my review, the things that were requested at the T R C meeting last week, some have been submitted, but they're not, I'll call it complete. Um, there's a portion of the water calculations that were done, but when they were sent, uh, the email clearly states that these are not complete. They have not been certified by the developer's engineer. Um, I did look at them this afternoon. Uh, I have some probably more questions than answers with them, um, which is never a good thing. Um, but it's, it shows that they haven't been reviewed yet. Um, so the biggest issue I had with water was that initially there's a ten inch water main that's coming out of the water plant that was gonna be tapped to supply this subdivision. No issues with the tap there. They initially had tapped it with a ten inch main. So my concern was, okay, if this is tapped with a ten inch main off of a ten inch main, how does that impact the neighborhood to the east? And how that ten inches there to feed a lot of town? So if we run this, how does that impact? The only way you're really gonna know that is to model it. But what my request was, hey, give me some design calculations to justify a ten inch tap or an eight inch tap or a six inch tap, whatever it needs to be. So that's, that's kind of the drill for that water calculation. If, if Midwestern or if I was doing a design on behalf of the town for an extension to a new subdivision, that's something I would have to do for the town. So I think it's only right to ask a developer to do the same thing. Um, and that's not something that we can do. Uh, I mean, we could do it, but we're not under contract to do that. I think that onus should call upon this developer to, to prove that. Um, I don't particularly have a concern with eight inch water main being a supply. I do have a little concern with fire demand, uh, to make sure that there's adequate fire to fire demand, but I'm not sure how, how's the town rated with fire? Are they four or five? I would assume.
Bob might know on top of it, it's been. Bobby Tyne's on mine, right? He might know all the problems then.
You can just, you can just ask him. He should be able. Which one, which Bob you want to talk to? Bobby?
Are you asking me for I S O rating? Is that what we're asking?
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I believe we're a five.
So there, there may not be enough supply in town to meet the theoretical anyway, but there's no law that says you have to meet that, but we'd like to know, okay, what can we supply? You know, obviously in a major fire situation, you know, you're gonna have decreases in town because you're pulling a huge amount, which I think everyone just deals with that. You know what I mean? Uh, you do the best you can with what you have. Uh, and if you were to run the mathematics, more than likely, I'd say eighty percent of towns in the U S wouldn't meet that theoretical number. So I'm not overly concerned, but I do want to make sure we're not just taking the approach of bigger is better.
Because it's.
Talking about injury problem as far as how you can split the fire.
Correct, yeah. So as soon as the fire hydrant gets shut off, the system will rebound within time and then you'll see that, but you know, and in town, that was Culver, you're gonna know when there's a major fire event, you know what I mean? So even in larger cities, you know, when there's a major fire event. So I'm not as concerned about fire demand, but I do want to make sure that we're not oversizing the lines just for the sake of oversizing the lines. I, I don't know if that's totally necessary. The nice thing is this water system is looped, so there's redundancy within it. That's a good thing. Um, the sanitary, like Kevin said, I don't have any issues with the sanitary other than there's a few items that did not meet state code and I commented on them for the pure sake to save them time with IDAM, I think for their IDAM permit, you know, if they, if we can catch it and save them that comment, that's a good thing.
And if it doesn't get caught and they send it in, IDAM.
Yeah, IDAM will catch it and, you know, I mean, why make them go through that if we can catch it for them?
So what exactly was caught?
So with eight inch sewer main, uh, state statute states that the distance between manholes can be no longer than four hundred feet.
Mm-hmm.
They had a couple that were greater than four hundred feet. So I just basically just need to shift so you have those distances are not longer than four hundred feet. And that comes back from the ability to clean between manholes. A lot of times if you get a, a fog or you get something jammed in the pipe, four hundred feet's a long way to jet. Most jet trucks don't, can't go further than that. So that's where that comes from.
Okay.
It's an access maintenance issue, so, um, it, it was minor, but I still commented on it. Um, the storm is probably the biggest thing that's hanging out there. Um, so not to step on Kevin, but I was not happy with the emergency routing. So I was okay with the hundred year storm.
Mm-hmm.
I think their calculations, their calculations, uh, justify their hundred year routing into their pond, and that seems to be okay. Uh, there's a little discrepancy there that I've asked about. But we always want to plan for the bigger storm, you know, I mean, code requires you to do to here, but we have to account for the next one because it happens, or you start stacking storms that we can't expect them to have a, a huge pond. But you want to make sure that you route those floodwaters when it does be that bigger storm or those stacked storms together, route that away from structure and away from people to, to save structure, to save, you know, for safety, basically. So I'm still waiting on some information from them, whether their emergency routing is adequate to what they think it should be. Uh, they did give me a, uh, an image, basically a detail of what the route looks like, and it's dumping into the wetland essentially. Um, and then it should route away. But I haven't had enough time for what they sent it to me to be able to really dive into that. The other issue is this is, um, stems from Bob Porter's knowledge of what happens behind the water plant. Um, they are redirecting some of that watershed, but that area behind the water plant just to the north of this does collect water. Um, so one thing that we suggested, or that I suggested to the town, that then the town levy to them was, let's have some emergency route for that north side. So that if that area does start to fill up, then, uh, there's a way to relieve it, and so that it doesn't impact structure, doesn't impact the water plant, existing homes that are in that area. And I, to be honest, I haven't seen enough to say I'm, I'm okay or not okay with it.
They said I'm very, very.
Yeah, so it's very rough. Very recent.
Yeah, I live on South Ohio Street, just down from where the water comes in. I'm, I'm safe the way it is. My property, but I know to the south, property that's right next to the water plant, they have issues with water now prior to building this or the.
We might be able to help that pre-existing condition with that. That would be something Bob Porter also mentioned when they were talking. That's right. Uh, the also, the other thing with the sanitation was the elevations would might create. Yeah. With some of their elevation.
And. Yeah, the issue there was that, um, everything flow, I mean, it flows downhill, right? So in this, in, in their model, it flowed downhill. But IDAM's kind of a stickler when you run invert slope length to the next invert that the math adds up. And there were several locations where it, it didn't add up. Now, they had plenty of fall. Everything was gonna flow, but I suggested they clean that up before they send it tied down. I think that covers, that was most everything that, that we brought up, but everything that came out of T R C, I would still call it inconclusive at this time. I think they're attempting to rectify it all, but I haven't seen enough or reviewed enough to, to be able to say, yep, we're everything checks the boxes and we're gonna go really, so.
Oh, my, my question really, first question. This map now layout, has it been updated to any of those calculations that weren't done? I know a few of them weren't. Did they, is this the same one that came before T R C? Or is?
They issued some new drawings. Um, I tried to print them this afternoon and I was having some technical issues. Um, I don't think it was with their drawing, but I wasn't able to get it reviewed this afternoon.
Okay.
So, uh, to answer your question.
Yeah.
The basic layout is the same, so they haven't moved units or structures or anything like that. They probably just cleaned up. But, um.
I know I brought that question up, whether they were gonna have enough time that could deal with fires when we put it, but.
Go ahead.
A point that we mentioned, I'm not sure we're expecting response from them. Um, the post office wasn't terribly happy about having a lot of streets with the same beginning. They're all like Sandy something.
Yeah.
Et cetera.
Yes. Yes.
And so I, I assume that that doesn't need any response except that we get to make the final decision. We, we.
That's correct. My, my state statute, the plan commission can rename their streets for them if, if you so choose.
And post offices. And we share. I mean, Purdue College and getting all that.
Yeah.
Even I suppose.
Well, let alone FedEx.
These the plans here and those for us.
They are.
You can.
Yes.
Okay, those for us to have and everything.
But this is not the completed.
Yeah.
It's still a working process.
It's still a working process.
Right, based upon those points, because they really didn't. I mean, we, we hit them on Thursday, to be fair, to Culver Equities and the developer. We hit them on Thursday with these points. They understood leaving here what the points were. Uh, they repeated them back to us. They repeated them back to us, so I'm assuming they understood what we were asking them. And we've gotten preliminary right. Addressment of those issues, but we don't have it finalized and they are under advice to have them finalized coming into the planning commission meeting next week. Uh, we, we, we set today for a target date because there's always a carrot. It's a good thing. And so we did get some stuff, but again, it's not done until Scott puts, that's right, the engineer, we're paid for the betting. And so he has to be satisfied. And you can see that it's gone through with, my opinion has been going through with fine tooth combing we're catching.
Pretty good.
With manholes and stuff, that's for you guys to say. My opinion is that he's done a pretty good job of accountability. We just need to get the results finalized, um, from them.
I want to bring up too, because I, I know there's been a lot of concern about the traffic and I know it's looked at and stuff. But my benefit as far as an answer, these are being done in phase one and phase two phase three, I'm not sure.
There's four, there's four building phases. There are two infrastructure phases, so probably with the ready grant, probably put in most of the sanitary is what I understood in the water, because that's what the ready's paying for. They'll come in with one and two, that will probably be twenty twenty-seven, looking at completion date somewhere in the later part of that probably. Twenty twenty-nine is the limit for them to get phases three and four up and running. The way I understand it with phases three and four, those are gonna be much more on demand. Those are gonna be your single family homes. Maximum is seventy. They're probably, I can't speak for the developer, but talking with Burke and a couple, couple of conversations, I'm convinced that they'll bring them in at ten unit, you know, at a time. They're not coming in to build one unit at a time. They're, they're gonna wanna online get them in chunks, but you're not gonna have them pop up overnight.
It's like they did as far as Maple Tree.
They were onlineing, right? So as they sold, they got them in, because it, it, it makes sense. They're getting their bulk upfront, right?
Yeah.
So generating, and then they'll come back in with the.
But I know talking to Burke, we was talking about, you know, my, one of my concerns, just a personal concern as far as not as a planning commission member, but as a citizen, you know. But I have felt from the start that we needed other access to this subdivision other than mainstream. And Burke said that that would be looked at after each phase, knowing exactly what's coming. And I kind of feel like that's just an answer that I would want to hear that much.
It might very well be. I can't speak to that, but what I can say is I understand the concern, and this is what I've been saying in town, and this is how I, I'm sorry to address the question. I agree with that.
Yeah.
The, the thing is, there are benefits from not having that access, believe it or not, because they'll go through town and we're trying to get that traffic and we're trying to get them attached to town. Not, not some little tag on. And the other benefit they said was they were worried, and we can disagree or agree with this, but this is a valid reason that it would, if you put a straight through, right through the middle of that thing, it becomes like a, a bypass and it becomes for high traffic, high speed. And I see the face and I agree. I do. I, I think there's.
Probably bypass town to go around that and come.
Yeah, and, and who knows? That's the thing that I'm convinced, and this is coming from MACOG themselves, and they've got a lot of experience with traffic. They said you can't, normally you, all you can do is do probabilities and models. Right?
Right.
They said this one's even more particular because you don't have one known. Most developments that go in these towns have, usually the assumption is you're getting full-time families. What you're looking at is a rental market that's on, we don't know the, you know, the qualification of this is gonna be important. You'll end up either engineering too much or too little if you don't do this in the proper phases, right, and rate. So something that we haven't ignored, just so you know, I stopped out at the cabinet factory and had conversations. They're the ones that own the strip to the west. Um, didn't put it in their head, but just said, said, you know, hey, you know, there's this talk and don't know what we'll do with it, but at least they know that's something that might be. So who knows?
Might think about it, uh, traffic in terms of if this is successful in support of housing, which is a, a big part of the driver here. A lot of those people are only here, working, right? Those cars are only here. They're just leaving at the end of the day and going someplace else to go to sleep. Um, the other thing to think about is even if it is all new people and it's forty percent I think it's a very conservative number. That's four more cars for every tank. And you think about how many cars pass by on these streets right now? How long it takes for ten cars to go by? There's plenty of room for additional cars you will buy before you really have traffic, right?
And a more street. Yeah.
So, so I understand traffic support, but so is the.
It, it's always, it's a trade-off, and that's something that we have to always consider, right?
Right.
I mean, wouldn't it be great to get more business, more people, more shopping in Culver and, and that's, you know, you gotta get the people in before you can start building economy of commerce, right? That's the driver and so there's those trade-offs, but the one thing you can say, I think, and that, we're, we're all gonna have to be part of it, I think, is this, we're gonna have to monitor and grow accordingly, right? And, and have conversations about the changes that need to be made in respect to people who might be more resistant against changes. Right? But until we really get data, I think it'll be very difficult to project, and you can make a lot of errors that you're just gonna regret down the line.
Yeah, just to, to Marty's point, and I'm a steering committee for the comprehensive plan. Um, I did a lot of work and wrote a lot of section on current employment. And we have, we have a thousand people every day coming to Culver to go to work from outside of the zip code, let alone from outside of the town limits. So I think to Marty's point, if a third of those people move into the Dunes, it's kind of a wash and maybe kind of reduced, I'm not sure. But there's, there's that much traffic that's going in and out of Culver every day, whether we, whether we realize it or see it, right?
I know we had a with Medellin, I don't think so Medellin now, but there's work there. And we actually anticipated a lot more business everything on that, but it wound up being probably pretty close to eighty percent of the people that work there would leave there and head to, uh, either Stark County or or Kalasak County or Hope County. So I mean, they wouldn't even come into your town to even buy gas for all that. Me, what business we got now, like you said, coming at lunchtime, coming in. You know.
There are eighteen, eighteen members of that workforce out there that actually live with Culver at their address.
Yeah.
Thirty-something, Don may have the exact number we've been discussing, if the thirty-some live in the four, six, five, one, one zip code. Love to change that. Now, what are the realities of it? Talking to their human resources might be difficult, right? Uh, it might be difficult to get the pay and adjustment, but but we'd like to try, right? See where we can go with it. Um.
Cool.
Yes.
Um, one thing I think is important to realize is that this is basically a residential development, so we're not looking at something that's gonna have a commercial component to it. So basically, traffic's gonna be pretty much limited to the residential part. It's, it's not gonna. It's, it's not gonna have a commercial component where. People from outside of the inner or, or outside of the development are gonna be going into the developments, could be totally residential.
Sure enough, but I mean, most of our traffic on our road is not pretty much a part of the union. I mean. You got people coming through there that's. Coming through and then going out on seventeen at Mill Street, you know, I mean. It's not business, it's just, it's affecting the citizens and they're the ones that actually are paying taxes now. And I'm not opposed to what you're saying, but I'm just saying there's other factors to look at as well. Because, I mean, the commercial part is just a part of.
That's one area that I've targeted for future studies, is that mill in Ohio and going down to Jefferson. I think there'll be a pattern change there.
Yeah.
We know that there has to be a realignment of Davis Street already, that's something that was already pre-existing, right? Some of the concerns about the lift in West Shore that's already pre-existing, I mean, you hit us in July. You know, right?
Exactly.
So it's not, it's not like we don't have issues, guys, it's, um. What I'm excited about, we may be able to focus on them and, and generate some return and some, um, some assets to be able to redirect towards. Making some improvements that are already existing, so.
Right.
Um, I agree all down the line things, but yeah.
Yeah, even when the school was brought up, you know, I mean, if we have more kids going to the school. I mean, history has always said, you know, your school is where your town is at. You know, you've got more kids and then you make provisions for those kids at that school. Because it benefits the town probably as much as anything else you can come up with.
Ask Karen Sherwin how many of those kids actually live in Culver. I mean, actually in the town of Culver, so it is a diminishing, ever diminishing number.
Oh, yeah.
And to be able to.
Be able to get a kid back when they can't fork.
That's exactly, that's exactly it. And you're talking about, you're talking about middle income families, not even, right?
Oh, yeah.
We're not talking about, so being able to bring in more units, right, at a price point that, that I think middle. Income can fit into workforce housing and then try to relieve the existing house market that's getting ate up or remodeled and tore down. Bispo and, and streets west of town. Watching affordable housing turn into seven hundred thousand dollar houses is scary because it isn't gonna stop. It just goes to demand and the willingness to do it.
It's a help going on south end by now.
Yeah.
I mean, since you're on the subject, do you have a price breakdown of what they see for apartment rental unit versus?
I've been hesitant to do that because the whole time, the whole basis of this is it's not, it's not subsidized housing, no, it's market-based housing. And it would, quite frankly, I think it would be irresponsible to tell you what the market's gonna be. I know that sounds like an out, but it's, it's, it's based on, I mean. The only reason I say that, gentlemen, is because look at, use Maple Ridge as an example. Look where Maple Ridge started, look where Maple Ridge is now. And I don't think you're gonna see that type of acceleration, because you're gonna get the units that are gonna help, right? The more units, the slower you can consume the demand a little better, but. How many rentals are gonna be out there? I don't know those questions. I know I've been told that we're looking at a price point, Marty, remember what we put out there, nine hundred. To twelve hundred, to twelve hundred price point on the rentals. And so I'd be comfortable putting that out there, that's a pretty big range, especially if you're.
That's really good for what we're looking at now as far as around town.
I think it's the state, I, I looked at the state average, I think I was reading, if I read it correctly, about eight fifty for apartment rental. Um, that's comparable.
Like a two-bedroom?
Yeah.
Okay.
Eight fifty to eleven hundred on that two-bedroom.
Joel. So is that gonna be the first phase? Then it's gonna be basically apartments, the first two, what are the first two phases?
Managed apartments and, and duplexes. Um, so you're gonna see some of the duplex homes that are very like Anchorage Way. Kind of duplexes, variation, uh, deciding, that kind of stuff to give some. Character to it, but you're gonna get those type of homes in there. I think there are some single.
Yeah, I think the senior living notes in the first two phases.
Senior living.
Senior living in the clubhouse.
Yeah.
Part of the first two phases is from.
We've seen Dog Park on the model, so that's gonna be public access. All the roads, all the sidewalks, all the paths are public access. There is plenty of green space out there built in. We looked at the. Setbacks and everything and, and they're in compliance. I think there's a commitment, it's an irrigated community, so you know, I mean, they're putting in irrigation water sprinkler system, so you're gonna have landscaping. Um, the whole complex is gonna have that. So they're not putting that in there just to.
So sorry, eight-inch line.
Well, I hope that they timed them well, that's something, uh, that's something that you asked the engineer back.
I, I, I just couldn't resist saying that.
It has been, it'd be a joke, but it is a trade-off, right?
Yeah.
You can't ask anybody to feel anyway, just get the information out there.
A concern that had been voiced before, but I don't know if we ever settled on an answer about it, for construction equipment and materials coming in and out of there. What is the best path they're probably gonna utilize, coming in south out of the county?
I think originally when Burke was here, been months now, but when Burke was originally here, everything has to be weighted and everything has to be approved through NDA. And their path has to be in compliance, basically. That's what the answer we were given. Um, my assumption, Joel, is they're gonna use that county road moving through it. Now, I do have some concerns and. Even if they do that, it's the only way you get into town. Let's be honest, you can't. No way.
I mean, they're not gonna try it because it's not an option, number one. We'd stop it if it were, if they even tried, I think we'd even stop it and. It's not in their best interest, so my assumption is so.
But even given that, I want to monitor that and make sure that we're protecting people that live out there and be fair to that.
They're already working on the mini warehouse and they've got their equipment out there and now. So, I mean.
This isn't the first.
Coming in now, I'd say they're, they're gonna be coming in there. I mean, same company, same equipment. And so what I mean, honestly, as far as, if it's a good guess, it'd be a good guess. That they do come out there. I'm assuming that's why they're coming in now, but wasn't.
I think so.
How much coming by the house? I'm kinda thinking coming down Main Street, so.
No.
Well, I don't know, just see him bring my houses down Monday, so break down the thought thing. What? Uh, don't worry.
Yeah, we. I don't think.
Yeah.
And like I said with everything else, Joel, if it is an issue, we're gonna address it and make sure they are in compliance with what the town needs.
Kevin, I want to come back to something we said, um, one, because I'm curious, and two, because I just stopped talking for a moment. But, uh, did I, did I hear you say that, um, for example, some of the parks, green space, Dog Park would be, um, uh, publicly accessible?
Yes, that's what we were told by the developer.
Okay, so those would be those.
There is an issue, there is, there are, the clubhouse is private, obviously, HOA members, but.
Capital spaces or not?
As we, definitely sidewalks, roads and paths are gonna be ours, because we're taking over the infrastructure, right? So, um, but the Dog Park was what we talked about and the plan still has a Dog Park and it was for public use. We're kind of excited by that.
I got a weird question, I guess. Once this is developed, I mean, as far as on the BGA side of this. Is this not gonna be even available for variances as far as anything added or?
I've changed.
Steve asking, answering that question.
Yeah, because, I mean, this is, this is new to the planning commission as far as subdivision. And I am, I like what's laid out. I like the way everybody's covered out the bases. Probably I know of like this. But I just don't want a development like this to go when it's a designed development. Without ordinances as far as setbacks, everything else, you know, that are induced to net, it's kind of like a PUD, but. Somebody comes back and they buy this home here and they want to come back for variances. Is this a, a pre-existing hardship to them because they bought the house that was developed in the way that we're drawn out?
I think there's two mechanisms, though, Stevie, you can talk to it, but I know with the HOA regime, it is stringent on what you can and can't do. And when we, even if you buy into the state, for example, I'm using, even though it's a PUD, it's still a condo regime. Maple Ridge, there's, you are not getting variances and you are not, so it's very difficult to do any changes with that HOA. It has to be approved and you have to go in as a group and get it.
That's the answer.
Not answer one.
So it is going to be set up like Maple Ridge where you own inside the wall?
That's exactly.
You own, you own the structure, they own the ground.
That's exactly.
Which I guess that brings up another question. When we take over the streets and the sidewalks, is it going to be incumbent on the person who lives in the house to scrape the sidewalk outside their domicile?
Yes. Yeah, it, it, either that or they're HO currently with the HO, with the condo regimes. The HOA can include that fee, the sidewalks are included, for example, at Maple Ridge, but your driveway is on you. The mowing and everything else is on the HOA, so it depends on how they set it up, Joel. Uh, but the town would be responsible for the driveways as they are in Maple Ridge, but as a matter of fact, the parking lot right in front of that little. Common area at Maple Ridge, they don't do it. That's done by sellers or by, I'm sorry, Kevin, at F and H, because. That is part of the actual condo regime, it's common property, so therefore they don't, the town didn't acquire that parking lot. But they acquired all the roads, sidewalks, everything else. Go bigger, I laughed at Bob, I said, you know, you could do a little. Anyway.
If the town acquiring these streets as well.
Yes, they are, indeed. They're being ceded over to the town. That's why we're investing and that's why Scott's sitting back there for Midwestern, because we want to make sure everything that we're acquiring, below the ground especially. Is to his, maybe not gleefully smiling about it, but he says it is functional and it is upsetting.
Yeah, because I, I know we're talking about traffic already, but I know with, we put the, the walk bicycle all the way around to there, whatever. And you're talking about traffic again, is that kind of affects that?
Good question.
Great.
Your question. So I, I, if I had a crystal ball.
It's an open question, I mean.
Get monitoring and adjusting and making sure that, a lot of these questions, and they're great questions, stressful questions and everything, I think it just gives us. Not only right now what to focus on to going into the planning, but also what we need to keep an eye on as we grow.
Yeah.
Right? And, and come back to this.
Yeah, I mean, this is just only a concern.
Absolutely.
We had to workshop, I would think it's a whole other question to ask other than, are we looking at this really against that? Yeah.
Yes. Just with the stuff that they turned back in, not tonight, I mean, oh, that's, that's the thing, we. We're hopefully gonna have some more answers going into next week, right? And we did get some responses from them with that enough time.
So let's stay with that for a moment. Suppose, uh, a week from tonight, we're sitting here and we've got. Happy answers and Midwest Engineering is happy with those, but we still got outstanding issues.
Then you act as the planning commission duly. And that's all, I mean, there's no expectations on how that meeting goes next week. What you guys are, we, we've gotten it down to a finite point, correct? You guys are the finish line in some ways on the planning at least.
Um, that's why we need to make sure we got it right.
That's, and to answer that question would be presumptuous on anybody's part. You guys have to act as independent party.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying in terms of the process and procedure, because. Yeah, I think about, I think about other projects that have come before us that are not quite ready for prime time.
And how have you dealt with them in that situation?
Well, I mean, if I'm not mistaken, if they're like, well, these are unanswered and it's a no vote. That has some pretty dire consequences as opposed to developers saying, we're not yet ready to present, because we don't have all those answers.
And you're going? I, I absolutely do, and I'll tell you where I've been going for a while. I've told them it will be in their best interest to make Mr. Typle back behind me happy, going in and making sure that he, that every comment that he's given has been addressed. It, before entering into this chamber to present in front of the planning commission. If they are not ready, if they're not a hundred percent confident, that is on the developer to communicate that to the town of Culver and we will move them. It will be their delay, but it will be, I don't want to see the project fail, that's not the point. Right, but I also think that it has to follow through the process accordingly. I will advise them if they are not, if, if I get a call from Scott and he's not a hundred percent happy and we've been communicating. Or he feels that there's some glaring issues and I will communicate that to Burke and at that point, they're the developer, they make the call. That's, I will not compromise the process. I will advise them. Because I think it's important to uphold the integrity. Okay? That's, I guess that's the answer to the question, though.
That if you needed. I think so, so, uh, just to make sure I, I captured this right for a minute, so it's basically like. Better be ready the night and evening, but if you're not ready, you don't want to present this.
You better communicate that.
Commission.
And it will probably be communicated from a secondary source as well. That's kind of how we arrived here.
Because, yeah, only for myself, I would not. I've, you know, the idea of a yes vote contingent upon something in the future happening, that's just not a vote I'm gonna take.
The TRC does project, that's, that's.
It's, it's kind of I's dotted, T's crossed, whatever the right size of water main, it's gotta be there.
And the, um, TRC gave them that conditional agreement, approval. And I'm, I'm confident that when the developer left here last week, they understood the requirements that the town is asking. Scott's outlined them a few times and a lot of the review comments weren't new last week, they had been on the sheet for a while. They're getting their eyes redirected towards them, so.
Right, I mean, all these questions that we're asking, I'm sure it came out far back in November, December.
True.
For last year. And I know you, you guys have already addressed a whole lot of this.
There, there will be outgoing things, we, we have.
But, but those questions, answers to those questions is what we will need.
Sure.
Uh, you know, as far as, I know with the, uh, planning commission either, we recommend, or we don't recommend.
Right.
And I'm assuming, I shouldn't assume anything in that position, but if we do not. Agree to some of the things, in other words, we vote not to recommend. Is that a, a place where the town will look at that and send it back, or will they just go ahead and go? With the town council, what they say?
They have the right, if, if this was not the past plan, they have the right to appeal to town council. It will appear in, in front of the town council.
But I'm saying that they have the authority to.
Yes.
Go ahead either way.
Yes, the town council, rest in body on this one way or another. Your recommendation comes to them from the planning and then they will give the deciding vote.
It all just is a recommendation.
That is.
We won't, we won't be, I'm saying this out loud just so everybody hears, but we will not recommend any changes. We might have concerns about what are being proposed.
I think that's well said. I think.
You know, you either agree with what's proposed or you don't agree with what's proposed, and that's what I'm saying.
And it has been, it's been a long process that they've gone through and that the town has been in, in negotiations and discussions with them. And one of the things that happened a few months ago that's really helped the town of Culver, in my opinion, and, and is, is having Midwestern available. And having them run it, because it, I'm not an engineer. But I have absolute hundred percent confidence that they can make me understand what, what was there and they made better, yeah, made the developer understand what the town needed. And that there were eyes, and it has been. And so we've gotten it down to the points that you've heard today. Um, I'm waiting, again, if they don't get Midwestern to vet it and review it. My suggestion would be for them not to enter here. And it has been for a long time. And I think Bob Porter was a hundred percent agreement with that statement. He's been working very closely on this and been valuable and. That's where we're at.
Yeah, and that's the same, I do want to say this, because I appreciate and respect everything. And Scott, I mean, you have been overwhelmed as far as information that I myself was wanting to hear. I mean, you satisfied a whole lot of my questions. Before I even asked, and I just want to say I respect them. Appreciate everything you've been done up to this point. That's Kevin, everybody, it's not just Karen, but.
Oh.
Bob Porter, I, I have to give him hands up directly because.
Not too.
Yeah, he is on.
Yeah.
I would note while the meeting's still, still open, if you want, anybody looked, wanted to look at these and have questions, it'd be a good time.
Does anybody want one?
Yeah. They're all different. No, they're all, yeah, they're all different.
So much for your table.
Down South Creek.
Because that's what I was curious, it's a little thing, but a sidewalk connecting it in. Cause that's what I was curious, it's a little thing, but a sidewalk connecting it into town at the end.
Yes, that golf cart path and the sidewalk down under that. Be the uh northeast corner.
Oh, there is.
There will be, um, I know the golf cart path and then that, I think there's a lot of people reading the sidewalk school, that's all, it's combat. Like we access. So I think we need that common path.
And you can see as you flip pages that it'll show you this.
Sidewalk was on one side.
That's right.
And there was an issue, so we thought if the wire was going to do that.
There, there is the utilities that, that help, it's kind of a utility running down there very. The one thing that Chester didn't point out, you're trying, they need to get proper. Right, so put in, install the, the old piano keys crossing.
Right, zebra stripe.
Yeah, and so that's been noted, um, but it's something we'll keep an eye on.
Yeah, I, I didn't hear the answer to when Chester left, so I'll just bring that again.
Same, what happens if they get phase one built and then, I don't know, they suddenly go bankrupt for some reason? Um, do, do we end up owning a bunch of infrastructure in any lot or, or does some other group? The homeowners right, sell it to somebody, what?
That's a good question.
They are.
I don't know the answer.
They will be, they're gonna get two hundred twenty-five units in. I'll guarantee that. I'll put it out there, they're already, they've had before they, they've had to get vetted. For the, a lot of different reasons, but now whether or not they decide after phase one and two, that three and four are gonna be profitable or what they want to do, that's that, they put a market delay clause in, that caused us to hold up the economic development agreement, who came back in and split the bond issue in the two. That way we, the reason we did it was because we didn't want to be putting up that much money upfront for infrastructure and not get the housing return because we wouldn't get, capture the tip back. And a big part of this is not just getting enough tip to pay the bonds. Phase one and two, based upon the bond issuance, it's gonna recapture some nice money coming back in yearly to the CRC. And that money is gonna be valuable for some of the things we've been talking about today, I think. And it's a, it's gonna be a nice source, uh, the executive storage cost us nothing and that's gonna bring in a nice percentage of money as well into the tip because we captured that as well. So we've got to be committed to it. Just so we can pay that bond and capture it, that's appropriate and it keeps us generating income.
So let me ask a question just to kind of follow up from, from my knowledge, so if, if it was a worst case scenario and the developer bailed unlikely, they would have too much invested in it, the infrastructure would all still be laid out in there, so another developer would still find that, I would think, find it very tempting to, to take over.
Keep in mind, those bonds are paid based upon what they captured, because that is the tax revenue. That's not gonna be a liability for the town, I think that's what you're asking.
No, I was more asking what do you think? What happens to? Right, I, I'm generally curious what happens to the physical property.
So, so those roads for the, for the final phases. Um, if they're not gonna. My assumption is they're gonna run the sanitary and the water through that, those phases. It's because of the way the ready grant is paying for that, so they have to get that out before. I was surprised, December twenty.
Is uh anywhere else that they're putting in, is that in tip as well?
Excuse me?
Yeah, may where else?
Yes.
It's in tip.
Yes.
Okay.
They run it, they run it down Main Street to capture that. So yes, and that, and but town is running utilities because we annexed that property that we're the building that executive storage.
Right.
We annexed it, we're obligated to run down Main Street, we're not crossing over, they're coming over to get us, we stopped short just before Tim Howard's driveway. So not a single penny of town money is going to put infrastructure in for that executive storage. They're coming to us and we're just doing what we're obligated to do. And they're paying.
Don's gonna like that.
I didn't know.
We require, we require these at Tom. So we got that and we can finalize.
I, that property, that's. I think years ago.
More than that, I think, more like eight to ten years ago.
How long parents been on the gift?
Yes. So if everything goes to plan and everything gets approved, when is just gonna start? Okay, that's a big gift and I appreciate it, if he's able to go to plan next week, let's just see. Okay? I know that Alan has said and the developers have said that they would like to start at least doing some of the uh architectural landscaping, um, as early as April, so they're looking at getting it next month, they have the permitting to do it already. Um, but really, honestly, I would say that this would start popping in the summer. Um, I don't wanna say I'm not, it's not the developer, I don't know exactly, but.
Not to get the ton of man, but I know that when the may warehouse of this was approved and the questions were asked, when are you gonna start on this? Or are you gonna be waiting until?
Yeah, they're live on those.
Um, they have waited until a subdivision going in before they started.
Well.
Not necessarily a hundred percent approved, but I mean, truth is truth.
Well, it's not approved.
No.
I mean, I, I just, I, I need to reiterate that, I mean, they still got stuff to go through for the town.
I know, it's not.
Okay.
Free.
I mean, and that's not what they put in silk guns already. They did that because they have approval to do that. They have approval to do that, they can go out and landscape.
That's probably why they have the equipment down there.
They say we're just gonna go and do that. I brought it up with Burke and he asked, he said, am I, I said, what are you doing? He goes, it's two things, number one, it's cheaper to bring it in and do it all at once, instead of bringing it back and forth, I get that. The second thing is, I've had people, I've had two calls, gentlemen, complaining about the color orange. Oh, that's okay, goes for the record, for your knowledge, orange is more sturdy than the black, it's more durable. Number one, number two, it's more visible for the construction, guys, thank you, common sense. And number three, it was because they didn't think people would be offended by the color orange in the town, which the school has black and orange in the community.
Good answer.
I suppose. Burke, I think, not unless you went to the academy. There you go, we're in white, I don't think they make it, we're in white, sorry, bud. Anyway.
Yeah, I just know that what they have done, badass, and I didn't want any kind of issues like that coming up going forward.
Yeah, I, I to the point, I think when we get on the maybe on the backside of this thing, people will very agree or disagree about that, right? And there are pros and cons of both sides and we have to make allowance for perspective for how people approach this project, what we need to do as a town. And, and, and that's why we asked a lot of experts, take it silly, Midwestern. We need to make sure that it's responsible. That everything that's being put in has been vetted, has been approved, may not be perfect, but it's approved, it's, it, it, and it's got the mark. And that way we can take it over with confidence, I do not want to get on the backside of this project saying I wish, that was one of the things with the high water relief, was it absolutely a hundred percent necessary? No, but it was something that we were insisting on, we already had existing issues. Why would I wait when I know there might be a problem and then end up using town funds to have to pay for that problem? When I can do something about it now, like, or we can do something.
That was one of my questions too, cause I know Scott talked about, you know, as far as, you know, you felt comfortable as far as where you've got it coming to the blow.
I was comfortable with their calculations on the hundred year storm.
Right, you were talking about the hundred year, and then you, we also mentioned as far as, what if we had at CRC, what if we had three storms in a row? I mean, we wind up with ten inches and rain in three days, I mean, like some of these towns we're on TV with them right now. I don't want to get meddling. Global warming or climate change, but yeah. Evidently something's happening because places that are flooded before are flooding the streets and people are actually getting walked away with, you know, and they don't fall under the hundred year at all.
No, the, the thing I would just kind of note is that I think there's kind of common misconceptions where you hear those terms five hundred year flood and hundred year, five hundred year storm, a thousand year. In any, in any given year, there is a one percent chance you're gonna have the five hundred year event.
Right.
There's a, there's a, you know, a one, a half percent chance you're gonna have a thousand year event.
Sure.
So, yeah, it could happen sometimes.
And if you've grown up in Indiana, you know anything about weather, but yeah, I mean, and there are big places being resolved. I remember in two thousands and some change, maybe, I can't quite recall, but we had a flood. And the tanky broken banks, wanna talk about a mess, right? And then when you're looking at old, we swallowed ground and stuff, it, it got really messy really fast. It, it can happen, you know, you had the perfect storm kind of thing that went on, so what we gotta do is protect that water plant. Right? And that's building that device and it still needs some fine tuning and that's where it's got sizable.
Well, I mean, I think they're being covered very well.
Yeah, I think that by the time we're done, we'll have something back there that's gonna.
But I'm still, I'm still concerned, I know Scott, if they were calculating under the hundred year. I mean, could, should we go a little further on that because just like what he's not about, you know, these places, and we already got an existing water small area back there. It, it doesn't take much to add water to that, you know?
Yeah, cause you're making that much impervious ground, you're gonna have to have it go somewhere.
Correct. There's always a fine line when you determine what's my standard to design. Because the, the larger storm that you have to take into account for means you have to take more into account for that. So the, the standard is to compare pre-development and post-development, we were ten and a hundred year storms, um, is kind of a process. Um, what I've learned is, uh, the town of Culver doesn't have its own stormwater standards, they kind of fall back on the county. The county's standards are very different than they are in other parts of the state, so what you might see in Hamilton County or Marion County, highly developed counties, you're gonna be pretty stringent, I mean, and we're really stringent. In more rural counties, you know.
Yeah.
Montgomery, Benton, White, you know, Marshall, that's, that's a little more rural centric. Um, those standards are maybe, I don't want to say relaxed, but maybe they're not as stringent. So, I mean, the common common thing is to look at those hundred year storms, but look at pre and post-developed. Um, one thing, just kind of rule of thumb is if you take a row crop field and grass it, the runoff will go down astronomically just because of the grass versus the row crop. In this case, it's a row crop field, so they get a benefit when they put grass in. Even if they put streets and rooftops and all that kind of stuff, the grass really overwhelms that row crop.
Right.
Just by the calculation.
Yeah. Yeah, I just didn't want, I wanted to myself, I don't wanna say that it's better for more and you're going to get a small population right there where that water comes up. Sacrifice their being for the big development that's gonna help. Like it helps the town, it helps everybody else, but then you got a few people that it would affect if it did happen to have it going.
Some of that northern area that exists now that drains to the north is actually gonna be diverted back towards the west, if I read, yeah.
Yeah, so something else to also consider is that the drainage ordinance within the county does not allow development to adversely impact the neighbor.
Right.
So if you, say you have parcel A, you own parcel A and live there and parcel B gets developed into whatever it might be. If whatever they do to their earth moving and their final, you know, final build adversely impacts your property, then that's in violation of the, the ordinance. So there's also that to consider, and then in this case, um, there's no evidence that the adjacent properties will be adversely impacted, so this area on the north side, the watershed today will actually, is actually being changed and a third of it's being directed in a different direction. So their stormwater basin is accounting for that so that it doesn't adversely impact the property to the west.
Actually, that water that comes up from behind there on the Collie Street, behind the water plant and the handsome, they're living next door. That was, was the west canal. And it receives. I mean, you're, you're adding to the, the west bound, but it comes up even though it's western bound, I just don't want the volume to be more than what it's already taking and still coming up.
Yeah, their, their hydraulic calculations show that the actual volume will be less than it is today.
I just don't want to be in a position where I'm sacrificing what happened to their house in order to get development over here. I mean, it's a person, person thing on my part, you know? Everybody comes in here with a concern, I want to hear that concern for that person.
And just, it's been bothering me, the hundred year flood, how many inches per hour are they talking over a period of time?
I used to know that.
I can look at what they published. And I think the factor that they used. So the inflow that they've used, it may be depending upon which simulation they run.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but in the developed state, um, the inflow depth for the hundred year event is like three and a half inches. The inflow depth for the hundred year event in the pre-developed state is five point zero four in one watershed and four point one nine in the other.
Seven inches per hour?
That's inches for the event.
If it took over four days, it wouldn't be bad, but.
And they ran all of their simulations on a twenty-four hour event.
Okay.
Which I questioned, um, a lot of times when you, um, do your analysis, you'll, you'll try to find that critical storm to see the highest amount of runoff in the short amount of time, usually it's in that two, four hour range. So you'll get the same amount of rain in a real short timeframe, that's when you get your maximum runoff. The method that they used evaluates all those scenarios and then pulls the highest runoff rate.
Okay.
So they're looking at them and they also, the soils they found out there were fairly sandy, so there should be a higher infiltration rate. They made assumptions to make it like the ground was frozen so that you're not getting any infiltration or very little infiltration.
We're gonna say the flooding events that have happened in this county in the last few years.
And that's, that's one thing that we were concerned with was they were assuming an infiltration rate. And I questioned, okay, what happens on March first when that happens and the ground is still frozen and you have a heavy rain that doesn't infiltrate? And so they changed their simulation to account for that.
Thank you, that's awesome.
That's the, that's it, part of the process along the way. Yeah. Been a lot of that, not pushback, but kind of.
We've seen it happen before, so it's.
And so it's been what we have coming down on the final lines here are, are really the points that are, I wouldn't call them finite or small, they still need to be addressed, but they, they are kind of getting into the final version of, of plan, these are the things that need to be addressed before. They, and like we said with the sanitary, Scott mentioned and I mentioned it, that stuff has to go through IDOM.
Yeah.
So they have to do that or they're gonna have a, a difficult time. So confident there, what we really, I'm really waiting to hear back and I'm interested in is the calculations on the water for the eight or ten, because you can't just dump that. Um, and I'm also interested in what pressure wise with the fire hydrants and some of that material, which we'll get more answer with the water.
I think there's nineteen total, now that includes, they are setting one. So the water main goes through the, the subdivision and then it goes down Main Street and there's a hydrant on the corner right at executive storage.
So like, there's one that's linking on.
I, I believe you're right.
That's the flushing hydrogen.
Yeah, so there's, I think there's nineteen total that are going within this plan, so it's over the dunes and the executive storage facilities.
There's one chat on here that says the new official one hundred year rainfall is seventeen point three inches in a twenty-four hour period.
A year, how many years?
That just popped, that's up here on the chat. Sounds like a lot.
I, I should go to trust that, that engineer back in the. Um, yeah, they, the last thing with. Um, yeah, they, the last thing with the, um. This, the, the one thing that definitely, Bob said this, we've said. Bob and I both and Scott, we've had a conversation about this a couple of months ago. And the developers seem very compliant and they did state that this is beneficial for both developer and the town. Is taking care of that, being cautious and putting in that high water relief now. That may need some tune up in terms of where they put it and how they put it, but. It, they did give me a PDF that shows a rough draft of it. We're going to need something more formal coming into the meeting next week. That'll be communicated tomorrow through email, um, by me, but I'm sure you'll also have some comments back. Um, but I don't think. That's it. Uh, again, Bob has not signed off on the sanitary. Um, because he wants to make sure that when he puts his name on it and it goes to IDM, it is compliant with what we've told him.
Yeah.
So they will not send anything to IDM until they get that signature. They're well aware of it. My guess is when we review the sanitary, it's probably going to be done. Those will be simple changes. Um, see about the calculations.
Scott, so is FEMA used for the? Flood calculations there?
Typically, it's a local, um. Maybe what's called an IDF curve, intensity duration frequency curve. And those are established for different regions. So for here, they're probably using one that was established for Plymouth. Because that's probably the closest gauging station that would create that curve. Um, and then you pull data off of that curve depending on what storm you're trying to define. So depending on where you are, you'll pull a local IDF curve to get your rainfall intensity duration numbers for your calculation.
I don't know if you heard that Denise? The answer to when Denise put according, she heard that information was according to reducedflooded.com. Was what she said, so, but your answer responded to that.
I know in the past we have had developers building a house. Get away with the natural. Run flow of water and they had to come back after building a house from IDM. Right there and make sure that was perfect. But I know I was kind of the on top of this, making sure it's right. I'm confident in that.
Kind of an odd question, but, uh, what's going to happen with all excess dirt at the site? No, I don't know. There will be by the time they're done. I don't know. Uh, by the time they get done, I mean, my imagination is that they will try to do. Landscape to utilize and minimize how many halls they have out there. But I can't answer that. I don't know. It's just because the similar construction in Plymouth, they created a kind of a mountain while they were working on it. So that's why. Down the line, somebody's going to make a phone call about a mountain of dirt.
Remember King of the Hill?
The first thing I think they'll do those, a lot of times they're going to try and capture that topsoil. And pile that up so they can repurpose that when they're done for the yards. Now what's underneath that, that's. Looks like sand.
Not good sand, it's like everything else out there. They got an old lake bed.
I, I think my uncle Lester had a pile of dirt where Sandy lives for like twenty-five years, so we'll, we'll be.
Anybody else have any other questions? Any questions from the audience?
They have more answers.
Anybody online? Chester, you got any last?
We have, we have a host of people online.
Oh, would they like to ask?
Is that, I'm just asking for procedure or is that for the, is that for the public hearing? This is a work session?
In the work session, you don't even have to have.
Right, I don't think.
That's correct.
Think you're right. That, that's true. You had had somebody make a comment. That's why I was curious. You'll have to open up formally next week. Public hearing formally. Yeah, imposing formally, but yes.
That will be a time thing, sign in for concern, not necessarily quite a big concern, but I.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So is everybody pretty satisfied?
Um, ninety-five percent.
To this point.
I worked out, they got a little work.
We've got another five percent. That's right here.
I, I would just like to thank town manager and, uh, the, uh, CRC for their due diligence since they get us to this point. So we're again, disciple for his engineering expertise.
Yeah, it's appreciated.
Yes. Yeah. So that we actually know what we're, what we're potentially getting.
What we don't know. The ability to translate it.
There you go.
That's a rare form for engineering.
No offense, but I mean, I've, I've dealt with a lot of engineers and these like, anybody could be an engineer. You have surpassed that by.
Thank you.
A long way.
Scott, tell the nights on Friday night on the south.
Yes.
Uh, motion to adjourn?
So we are going to meet next Tuesday.
Yes.
A regular scheduled meeting.
Regular scheduled meeting, six thirty.
It will be timed.
And we will have.
I think it's just this one.
Just this one? All right, because we talked, oh, and you thought there might be another one that never counted over. I'm satisfied. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? As opposed? All right.